Alrighty, we're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. At this moment, we'll go ahead and take a moment of silence. Alrighty. At this time, it don't look like we have anybody for public comment. I do appreciate you gentlemen for showing up for the for the meeting today. We are going to go over several several things. First thing we're gonna do is we're gonna look at our minutes for 8:20 and work session of 9:06 and get those approved. Does anybody have any questions on the minutes? If we don't have any questions on the minutes, I'll look to approve both of them, 8:20 and 9:06. Do I have a motion? Okay, I got a motion by Mr. Sizemore. Do I have a second? I got a second. All in favor to prove the minutes as written? Aye. Any opposed? Nay. Eyes have it. Okay, we're moving forward. The next thing we have is to approve the financial statements. Hopefully those statements a little bit easier to read. They're still kind of small, but hopefully there's easier easier to read than we were last time. Thought we've got to buy some magnifying glasses for some, but. So we're gonna be approving the statements for June, July, and August. Do I have a motion to approve the financial statements that's been presented?
Check the rural energy solutions for the generator. Was that for the purchase?
That was partial.
Installation?
No, sir, that's partial payment. Because it did come in. After it came in, we gave them partial payment. They'll get their final payment after it's installed.
Okay. The final payment will be.
It's what you guys approved. I don't have that in front of me, but.
But if it's gonna be less than we originally thought.
At this point, it's gonna be less than what we originally thought. Yes, sir. We did get the concrete poured and we got the pole set. So after the, and we got the propane tank set. West Texas did come over there and start putting some new valves and stuff in it. So it'll be ready when they when they get ready. But I did talk to them and they should be getting that set anytime, any day, actually. They've already been over there and look at the stuff to to install the electrical panels. It's gonna be running that generator. So we're in good shape there.
I'd like to make a motion to table our finances.
Okay.
Since we barely got our packets.
Okay, we'll table the finances. We'll move on. Do we know if the do we do we know if Crest National Bank has it in order now for us to be able to get the they've got all their issues fixed? Alrighty, good. Okay. Can't second. I gotta get second. Hold on one second. Hold on, let me call for the motion first. Okay, do I have a motion to table the the finances till next meeting? I got a motion. Do I have a second? Okay, got a second. Mr. Durham? All in favor? Aye. Okay, any opposed? Nay. Alrighty. Alrighty, next. Now with that financials, we did have a check that's in there. So so when you are going through there, you understand a certain check that was deposited. And legal counsel did provide me a statement for the community. The city of Crest under my leadership and the city council initiated an investigation in 2022 after review of the city financial records, revealing previous financial irregularities involving public funds. A forensic investigation of the financial records of the city was initiated utilizing the services of an accounting service firm engaged by the city. The findings of the investigation revealed that misappropriation of public funds had occurred, resulting in financial loss sustained by the city. A proof of loss claim was lodged by the city with the Texas Municipal League, TML. The city's insurance carrier and also with the city's charity coverage bond, we opened the claim with both. There's a bond and our insurance company. Upon completing its review of the claim, TML determined that evidence of financial lot of loss occurred had occurred covered under the public dishonesty, employee dishonesty section of the city's insurance policy. TML issued a subpayment of $33,504.62 to the city, which has been applied to the city's loss. Claims have been filed with the security bond companies in an effort to recover the balance of funds owed to the city. The city has notified law enforcement agencies now conducting their own independent investigations. Myself, as well as the city council, have and will fully cooperate with ongoing investigations by insurance companies and law enforcement agencies in a due diligence attempt to achieve the best possible outcome and recover the funds for the city and its citizens. I appreciate everybody's patience on that. There will be more to come and we will update you as we know. The next thing we're gonna do is consider an approved municipal maintenance agreement with TechDOT. As we remember from the last hearing we had with TechDOT, this is a agreement that is required to have in order to continue to have the funds and for TechDOT to continue to to maintain the loop around Ripley and I-87. The basic agreement they do typically every 10 years, he said they've been a little bit behind on Crest's, but this is something we is required to do.
If we approve this, how does that affect where we are on getting our survey?
Survey? That has nothing to do with the survey. Zero to do with the survey. It's all the ordinance is already in place for parallel parking versus parallel park versus vertical parking. So that's already in place. That has nothing to do with it. Now the survey, we will be reaching out to the school. I haven't heard from the school since our last meeting. I will be reached out to the school and there's gonna be myself, Mr. Owen, and Mr. Sizemore offering a meeting with them to move that survey on if they choose to continue to want to do that survey.
So Chapter 311 of Transportation Code gives the city exclusive dominion, control, and jurisdiction over and under the public streets within its corporate limits and authorizes the city to enter agreement with the state to fix responsibilities for maintenance, control, supervision, and regulation of state highways. So is that the city making the maintenance or is that the state will continue?
The state will continue. If that's what it's saying, if we don't have this, then the city will burden all costs of that road.
So there's still the option though that we can do the survey and they say it's not somebody else say to do that.
Correct. Yes. So the survey would come out and say it's safe to change that parking and then we'll be able to change that parking. We just have to change the ordinance. Our ordinance is already in place.
But if we do that and can the ordinance be changed?
Maybe I'm confused with your question. Say that one more time.
Okay, if the survey comes back and it's, you know, really not saying a big deal like it's one way or the other, terrible.
Can we change the ordinance after that? Absolutely. And I would encourage that. When I first took when I first took over office, I was ready to change that until I found out that we couldn't change it without the state's approval. And plus, if I think everybody would agree, if the if the survey comes back and says it's too dangerous, I don't think nobody would want to do anything different, but then do what needs to be done. If everything's okay until it's not okay. I guarantee those those citizens up in North Carolina never would have thought they're seeing what they're seeing right now. And they have another one headed their way.
When we do the survey, will they put out data for cars versus trucks versus oh, which has low for us to know what kind of activity we have on that really
I have no idea how that survey is taken. I just know it'll be done during the busiest time of the year to to verify if a catastrophe took place at the busiest time of the year. Is there a problem? Hope that answered your question.
I guess we're assuming that that loop was built that way for disaster relief route.
Exactly. That's how I understand it. Absolutely.
Which is, in my opinion, it doesn't help that much.
Well, thank God. I don't think we've had to deal with a disaster.
No. It's Crest is cut off from from the south by the railroad. So it'd be nice if someday it was something done where there was another route to the south other than a paved route that's 400 highway and as well as that six miles east. No pavement south or north. If your railroad heads up.
Do you know if they'll let people to be surveyed, they're just gonna count cars and see that or pick up my desk? Here, mid here?
Oh, I doubt it. It won't be. It won't be an opinion based survey. Survey is gonna be a factual based survey of when cars are parked there. Do they have turning radius for semi to get through there? Depending on which vehicles are parked where and when. Because if they're parked, they're parked on both sides, I don't know how you get through there.
There's never been a problem before. I don't know why it's a problem now.
Well, that'd be their survey. Yeah, that's that's what they're gonna survey.
Counter.
Yeah, that's what I figured.
I had one right over here the other day. I put those out. I'm sure that was.
I've never, never done a survey. I'm not sure.
There was one period of time back there when they were in the railroad crossing down here on 125 that they had traffic going that way. Far as I know, I mean, those semi trucks, things would be there all day long. And what goes out, everyone's there at that very time, over that 30, 15, 20 minute time period. Rest of the time, equipment, farm equipment, tractors, everything.
I mean, 100% support. The school wants to do that survey. I support it 100%. Any other questions?
Make a motion. We approve the maintenance agreement.
Okay, do I have a second? There ain't no way we could afford it. Do I have a second? I got a second. All in favor of the maintenance agreement with TechDOT? Aye. Any opposed? Nay. Alrighty. Eyes have it. Alrighty, this section here, I'm quite excited to talk about. This will be an ordinance to not raise the taxes for the community of Crest, city limits, of course. We're going to keep the same revenue rate. So you have a levy rate, then you have a revenue rate. Now, then you have what they called a call a voter approved rate. Now voter approved rate, a little bit over 3%. You can increase your levy amount over three, a little bit over 3% each year. Okay? Since the city of Crest does have some 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 extra income over how we have staffed the city and made some budget decisions with the city, we do have income not to require that amount of money to be levied on the citizens of Crest. So we're going to do an ordinance of taking our our tax rate from 0.4355 down to 0.359. Now, what that means is, yes, property values went up. Although property values went up, we're gonna choose to pass on the discount to the community. Now, that will only be what we're in charge of, which is city. That does not include your school taxes. It does not include your county taxes. I believe both of them took the voter approved rate, which was an increase. We're choosing not to do that. We're gonna continue to to run the way we are because we do have some extra income to do that as of right now. So does anybody have any questions on the ordinance? We will still bring in the same amount of income we did last year which effectively decreased your taxes. Your rate. You'll still pay the same amount of taxes for the city, but they won't go up because your appraisal values went up. Do we have any questions on that?
I'm motion to approve.
Okay, I got a motion to approve ordinance 20240930A. I got a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Nay. Eyes have it. So Mr. Owen, you was for. I gotta, I gotta record the vote. Ms. Vintonet, for. Mr. Sizemore?
For.
Ms. Davis, for. Mr. Durham, for. Fantastic. Those those votes has been recorded. Alrighty, the next order of business is to approve the budget. And we did a extensive review of the budget at our work session. We went through all the actuals and proposed numbers. And we did update some of those as we had them versus our last meeting. But it looks like we have able to balance the budget again this year. What does, what is your second page saying? If I, I mean, your last page, I'm so sorry. That number's okay, so you didn't get moved back over. But if you remember from your from your budget meeting, that number of of revenue of revenue that we had left over, it's a little bit over $100,000. We didn't get that stretched out. So it gives you the pound size, but a little bit over $100,000 that we had left over from last from last year on the actual. Do we have any more? Do we have any more questions on the budget? Now, this year, I'm real excited to say you know, we're very grateful to senior citizens to allow us to use this building as much as they do. After COVID, they did had they had to change up some things on how they raised some money. So we are going to be giving them a $1,500 donation for the use of the building that we talked about during the during the budget. That is one one big change on here. Other than that, most of it is pretty much stayed the same. Do we have any questions on the budget? Okay, do I have a motion to pass the budget as written? Okay, I got a motion. Do I have a second? Alrighty, all in favor of pass the budget as written? Aye. Any opposed? Nay. Okay, the eyes have it. Budget's passed, is written. Alrighty, next thing we have is a resolution for the newspaper. Again, this year, we're going to officially call Swisher County News as our official paper. At this point, we'll just pass a resolution to use Swisher County News as a as our newspaper. Anybody have questions? If we don't have any questions, do I have a motion to pass the resolution for official newspaper to be Swisher County News? Okay, I have a motion by Sarah. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Have a second? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Nay. Alrighty, fantastic. Passed. Alrighty, next item of business. Okay, we just need to approve to use LS LSL for our auditing service.
Be paying down 5,000 per year?
5,000 dollars a year.
How many years of time that we have to get caught up?
We gotta go back to 2015. 2015 being the last year we did audit. And I will say we're blessed to find somebody to do it at this rate. Luckily, they do a lot of small communities and they specialize in communities like ours that has the challenges that we've had similar to ours to get where we need to get to be compliant.
How many years have they said they're gonna try to stay on in this next fiscal year to try to catch us up?
I have no, I mean, they did and they'll they'll just get the information and do it forward as they it will take them longer to do 22, 23, and 24 than it will take to do the previous. Only for the fact they'll have more information those years than they will.
It's 5,000 for everything with 5,000 a year?
Per year.
Wow.
So if they were to catch us up to say 2021 in that neighborhood, we would have about 30,000 that we would owe them at the end of the year to catch us up part of the way.
No more than 5,000 a year. I understand you guys.
It has to be done because of the
Yes.
Yeah. Which is the money that we're receiving for them.
Yeah. Yeah.
They did. They did go back and verify there's no provision to say that they can relieve those years because of any circumstance. I did ask them to to verify that. And I did get the email back that says, no, there's no provisions that says they can relieve those years.
So they gotta go back to
I will say this, guys, the last one we did 2015 cost 15 to 16,000 dollars that one year.
What year was that? It was 2015. Bill started 2016?
Correct.
Well, the reason I say it the way I said it is that we just need to keep in the back of our mind that
We're gonna spend some money.
We may be dropping the chance to change if they make a lot of progress on catching us up within the first year.
Correct. And I hope they make all the progress in the world. So we can get it done. And I don't know if they're gonna go backward. They might go backwards. I don't know. No, I don't know. Okay, so do I have a motion to approve LSL for our audit services?
I motion.
I got a motion. Do I got a second? Okay, I got a second, Mr. Durham. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Nay. Okay, the eyes have it. Moving forward. Okay. The next thing we have is to adopt a holiday calendar. So, we've got our typical holidays here. Till '24, '25. The holidays are highlighted in yellow and marked at the bottom.
And these are paid holidays for employees?
That's correct. For full-time employees.
Not for part-time.
Not for part-time.
We don't have any full-time employees, do we?
The three gentlemen.
Oh, okay.
They're full-time, but, uh, they're full-time, but they are, uh, I guess it's too damn, too... Forgot this part of the budget. Hey, if, if I don't have any questions, do I have a motion to approve the holiday calendar as continued? Uh-huh.
The guys, guys that are working for the city, they're doing a pretty nice job in the city. And what I've seen. Do, do they have any kind of, like, a personal leave day or...
We have, there's no, there's no benefits set up right now for employees. That'll be something when they, when we put them full-time, that'd be something we, we...
So, we'll review it at that time and see if there's something...
Correct.
If I have a benefit type deal for them.
Correct. You have questions? Do you have a motion to approve the holiday calendar? I got a motion by Mr. Durham, do I have a second? Mr. Sizemore, seconded. All in favor of the holiday calendar, aye? Any opposed, nay? Alrighty, holiday calendar approved as written. Okay, the next part of the budget I forgot about is the, uh, is the fire department on how their funds will be budgeted for them to spend without approval from the city council. As long as they spend their funds in this manner, they won't have to keep coming back to the city council for approvals. If there's something outside of, outside of these areas that they need approval on, then that will be when they'll need to come back to the city council for approval. I just wanted to address this with everybody to make sure anybody have any questions on it or what's, whatever. Okay?
If you haven't seen the new Humvee?
They just got painted? Just new to us?
But it looks new. They painted it red, it looks awesome. And I was talking to those guys this afternoon. We have a situation that I think we need to be thinking about soon for the fire department. They have brush trucks that they're, they're getting some that's brushed back up putting a tank on the old engine that sat outside and busted. That's water under the bridge, but nothing good about that now. But that's one engine down and then our structural fire, fire engine has a problem. You might tell us a little more about it or give us details, but I know it's not, it's not functional.
Well, that was the reason why we gave so much more money this year. We gave it a lot more money than we've ever gave you before. We gave them $7,000 towards their truck repairs versus the top of six that we continue to give them. So, with that money, plus they're looking to get a grant to fix some of those truck repairs. So, at that point, this is, all this is set up side right now for them to move forward to get some of these repairs fixed without keep coming to the city council. But I have some really exciting foresight that I believe when they continue to work on all these reports, they'll continue to start seeing money flow in. I know we've got probably, how many reports we have left to do, Tracy? Probably eight or nine? And then we'll start seeing that money come in, so that's gonna be some extra money for them. So, luckily, they've started seeing some checks. I bet they've seen three or four so far for just one accident or they're extra on top of that? Okay, I could just wonder if there's two checks? Uh, but it's been approved? Okay, that's what I thought. So, we just ain't got the check yet, but it's been approved, so we'll continue to see that money. So, that's gonna help that a lot.
Problem I see as a homeowner in this town. I have a fire rating on my homeowner's engine that's based on whatever our volunteer fire department is rated at. If they know that we don't have a structural engine, what does that do to everybody's homeowner's policies?
That repair's gonna cost them about $10,000, I believe. So, they have $14,000 sitting there to get that one fixed up. And then if they need more money, they can submit a proposal and a plan to come and talk to you guys for that extra money. But right now, they have the money to move forward on getting that repair done. It's the reason why we had to do this budget. Because without a budget, they gotta come to you guys every single time. If we don't have this budget, they wouldn't be able to talk to you again until next month. That's why I pushed for this budget to be done today versus, because we've never had a budget before. So, they've always had to come to you guys. So, with a budget, they can start working out of a, out of the wallet without having to ask mom and dad for money. So, right now, I think they'll be, they'll be in decent shape. And then if they do need more money after that, they can come to the city council and, uh, and hopefully some other avenues that we continue to help out to get more, more funds. But we'll be able to have more information before we do that. But hopefully by then, I think these reports gonna be, continue to be submitted and collect more money for, for repairs like that. Because some of the, some of the repairs that's required is because they were out on, out on runs or training and they broke during those times. So, of course, insurance needs to pay their portion and help us continue to replenish those repairs. But that's a good question.
They have enough money today to pull the trigger on that $10,000 repair.
Correct. If we wouldn't have done this, they could not have. That's why we're talking about it right now.
We need that engine running.
Yep. Yep. Now, they couldn't do it today, but they could do it tomorrow. Tomorrow's October 1st. This will be part of their, their approved budget. Anybody have any questions on it? So, this is, this is already worked into our budget. It's just an addendum to the budget. If, if y'all have any questions, we can talk about some more about, we move on. Okay. So, just, just for the record, let's just, uh, anybody have, let me just get a motion to, to approve the, the budget part for the fire department. That way, you got a motion, do I have a second? I got a second, all in favor, aye? Any opposed, nay? Good deal. That way, we just have that official, they can move on. Okay, looks like we've got everything else handled. You know what? Man, I gotta back up. We're gonna have to reapprove that budget. I gotta call for a public hearing and we'll reapprove budget. Now, nobody signed up for, for anything, but I do want to call a public hearing for the '24, '25 budget. I'm a rookie, I'm still figuring this out. I'll be the first one to tell you. I've learned a whole lot from last two years. I'll continue to learn a lot more, but I did forget about the hearing that I do have on here. Do I have anybody that wants to speak during the hearing of the, of the budget? No? If I do, and you have some concerns that city council needs to reconsider before we take the, uh, the approval again for the budget, we will listen to that before we move forward. Okay, if we don't have nothing, let's just go ahead and, and reapprove the budget after that hearing. Alrighty, do I have a, do I have a motion to approve the budget as we've already approved?
Kelly?
Kelly?
I thought you made it up in a second. I'll really do it again.
Okay. And the second?
Was Dane.
Okay, alrighty. All in favor, aye? Already opposed, nay? Yeah, good. Alrighty. I'll continue to figure it out. I'll be the first one to say, uh, I'll continue to learn and I'll always reach my hand out to anybody that wants to help out and talk about things, Tracy. Now that you're here, you want to go ahead and give us the, the fire department's spill? You had a few colored graphs, it looks like. We got ink. We got ink. Actually, we got them to figure out how to help us make it real printing color.
Okay, so, for the month of August, we had two meetings, one medical, one motor vehicle accident, and one fire. Fuel was $321, $321.30 off-road diesel only. A lot of that is because we don't fill up the trucks until they're like halfway or a little under, just get fresh diesel in them. So, then last month, it was a little bit less. And then, as of February 2024, we've had 17 medicals, 12 meetings, 17 fire, 12 motor vehicle accidents, and three other. The others were a control burn we got called out on and a search and rescue party for two kiddos. And then, yes, we do have a pretty Humvee. Hopefully, we can get it to not overheat and then we'll have that one going. We're gonna put some lights, lights on it, and then we're gonna continue that. I think our brush 72 is back in order. We did get the pump on it rebuilt for the motor. We do have another one ordered that has not came in yet for a backup because lord knows when we're down, we, that's, that's the main, that's our main truck. Outside of that, we're still moving forward.
Thank you, ma'am. Alrighty, looks like that's all we have for the meeting. Any considered items that want to be placed on the agenda for next, next time?
When, when will the website be updated for the ordinances that have been approved?
What, we are working on that. We are working on that. I was, um, that's a great question. As a matter of fact, I was talking to another city about it today and it's a struggle and we're working on it. Maybe I can get some volunteers to come in and help load those up. It's real simple. I can show anybody how to do it. It's just finding the time to get it done, but anybody wants to volunteer, let me know and I'll get you guys to get the, the items scanned and loaded on the website. So, but we're working on it. Not only that, we will be also getting all the financial statements, bank statements loaded on, on, on the website, too. One of my goals was to get, um, uh, stars that the state controllers puts out for, it's called transparency stars. So, in order to do that, you got to have certain information on the website. So, that's still my goal and I'm planning to get it done, but it is a, it's, it's tasking for sure. Yes, great question. So, it goes in the newspaper on Thursday, the bid request or the, the bid packet. And packets are being sent out Thursday for the ones that are ready or interested. But after that, then we get to start moving forward on, on that. So, we are definitely, definitely ready. What did she say today? When did the bid close? Yeah, the fifth, yeah. Yeah. I think they'll have it all ready for the 15th, and I think our meeting's on the 17th, 19th, I don't remember. 15th. Yeah, so 15th, that's where, where the 15th came from. It'll be the third Tuesday of the month. And they'll come and they'll, they'll give us all the packets and then we'll discuss them. I'll, oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, that's right. So, yeah, because they get, yeah. So, be the, it'll be, so, should be so, around November 19th.
Okay, we'll do that about there next Tuesday?
Yes. Yeah, now, there will be some in stone dates. I'll call them more and ask them how well that can move around. Because once they, when they start putting it in the paper, when sealed bids will be open, it'll have to be that day. But I'll verify. So, we'll get more information, let you know.
I do have a question. The ordinance that we have on how many people can live in RVs and stuff?
We don't have one.
We don't have one? Can we work on one?
Sure. I'll let you be the head spirit on that one and do some research on that. Bring it to me. How's that sound?
Okay.
Anybody else? And then we go see if you can even put a ordinance on it, how many people can live.
Yes, it's just, uh, it's just questions that people ask me because we have maybe four families living in one property or different.
Got you. We will definitely look into that and make sure general law municipality can monitor that. Because there's a lot of stuff that we can't do as a small municipality. So, your, your plane views, your tourias, and stuff like that, it's a, a, a different type of municipality. They can make their own laws, basically. We gotta go under the constitution what Texas says. They're called a home rule, we're called a general law municipality. So, but if you bring me that information, we'll move forward. What else? Anything else? Alrighty, at this point, um, do I have a motion to adjourn? I got a motion to adjourn, do I have a second?
I think it...
Alrighty, was it Kelly, Kelly motion and Sarah second? Okay.